Welcome to the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners Meeting with your Chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your Commissioners include, from District 1, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District 2, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District 3, Commissioner Clinton Johnson; from District 4, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District 5, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District 6, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your County Administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Dougherty County Commission Meeting.
Good morning.
All right, let's go ahead and call it a order, the Dougherty County Commission Regular Meeting for February 15th, 2021. And I note for the record that Commissioner Newsom, Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Gray are all present. I heard Commissioner Gaines and Commissioner Jones on our phone, is that correct?
That's correct. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Gaines. All right, if I could, everyone please stand for the prayer and then the pledge. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this time that we have to come together to do work for the citizens of Dougherty County. Thank you for the resources that you have provided us with. Thank you for the opportunities you continue to give us. Please allow us to take the many resources that you've provided us with and grow continued opportunities for our people. We thank you for the vaccines that you have provided to this community and that are being distributed to make us a healthier, stronger, and happier community. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Consider for action the minutes of the January 22nd Annual Retreat and January 25th Regular Meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I heard a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? There being no, call matter for vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. But now move on to delegations. This is where the Commission will hear comments of those items pertaining to Dougherty County, which public hearing has not been held or scheduled. We ask everyone to be brief, to the point, and consider a time for others. And I understand that we had a citizen, Mr. John Burns, who was present to discuss concerns pertaining to youth, senior citizens, and support efforts of Mr. Wright. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Where did I hear that? Oh, good morning. All right, if you would, go ahead and come on forward. Did you want to speak, Mr. Burns?
Sir.
Did you want to speak this morning?
Yes, sir.
All right, come on. Good morning, Mr. Burns. How are you doing?
Good morning. How are you?
Very good. Come on.
Good morning.
Step to the well, please, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I came up to, not as a complainer, but mostly as a someone, a citizen of concern. And I'm quite sure that we all can agree that...
You came and spoke to us before about something related to Putney, and you talked about wanting to be a youth center there in Putney. Is that right?
That's correct. I didn't...
I know you're wearing a mask, but I remember your voice and your face, so...
Yes, I didn't actually speak in front of the panel. I spoke behind closed doors on the way out with Mr. Edwards.
Okay.
Which is not actually my commissioner for that area, but however, he was willing to listen.
Sure.
I also spoke with Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
But however, I'm quite sure we all can agree that one thing that will remain is going to be seed, time, and harvest. And in saying that, I think we might need to plant more seeds into our youth. What I mean is, sports, for instance, if you guys probably coming up, play baseball, soccer, now your kids or grandkids doing it, it makes a difference in your life.
I agree.
They had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Albany Area Baseball over at the Police Department here in the city, and three years ago I was attending that meeting. Now, there is no representative from the community, and they're saying that we all are the community, but people of color that represent the youth, their kids and grandkids, not the first one. Eastside Park not open. The park in Putney actually was taken away. Bind schools had it, did some temporary football. Now it's just trees. They taking away the park completely. No baseball, no soccer. They got a sliding board, but after two years old, you probably don't want to slide anymore. Kids grow out of the sliding board very fast. But however, that's what's going on. South Gate Park flooded, no one's there. I'm not complaining, but I've put my effort into this. Me and my family, my sons and my wife and kids, was park president. Okay? And in doing that each year, you have to go downtown, Board Education, put your name on the list to pass out the flyers for kids to come play ball. Now that's not happening because no one's at the park. And the park that I represented is, like I said, is completely gone now. Three miles up, we got a walking trail at the Radiant Springs, which is fantastic. And I appreciate everything that's going on in the city, infrastructure, roads, streets being paved and the alleys. But at this time, we're not planting any seeds in our community of color. And it's beginning to be very difficult to look at. So I want to bring to the attention that if we could, try to at least get something back going. Judge Weaver played a big instrument in the youth, but he's not doing it anymore. So I'm going to have to pick the mantle back up and try to move some things forward for the kids. There again, it's, you know, you guys are the gatekeepers of the city, and we have to come to you guys with questions or concerns.
Yes, sir.
And moving on to that, to the next question, what are the next concern? Don't want to seem like it's a complaint, but shots for the senior citizen. I'm speaking with local churches, pastors, bishops, and they're not seeming to be on the same page. Some want the shots, some say their members don't. And, you know, looking at the news, they're bringing stars in, say for instance, in Atlanta, you know, you got the stars coming in. It's very famous people around here, you guys, Johnson, Edwards, can't say, don't know much about you, but these names I can relate to. Let's, you know, kind of let them see you guys.
I'd like to speak to that, Mr. Burns. About two weeks ago, I held a phone conference along with the mayor, and we actually did a Zoom with our local clergy. All, everyone was invited, Ms. Howell can attest to that. And we had a very productive Zoom call regarding the vaccine and getting that information out to our church community, because I do view them as, our church community as being a vital partner. And as a result of that, we did have several ministers request information that they could pass on to the parishioners. There is going to be some, you can't, you can't make everybody believe or think the same thing, but what we can do is pass out truthful information. We did get that out. We actually had, we had a pastor actually as part of our press conference to share his experience with COVID-19. And I understand that Ms. Howell is working on getting some public service announcements out for us. And I plan on, I don't fall into the category yet where I can take the shot, but I will take the shot, and I'll be happy to televise it. And I think your comments were well taken, but I did want you to know...
And Chairman, I... May I speak to that as well?
Yes, ma'am. And Commissioner Gaines did do that as well. Thank you.
Yes, I appreciate your comments about the jab, about the vaccination, and I am awfully grateful of its availability, and I have taken now my final shot. And I've made that very public. I am also editor of the Southwest Georgian, and we've fully covered it. I've taken photographs of me taking the shot. It's been frontline news. And I might add in addition to that, that the Coalition of Pastors, I'm sure following up on what the Chair just said, is doing a really good job getting the message out. And I believe on February 27th, the Coalition of Pastors have joined with the Public Health Department, our Southwest Georgia District Health Department, and they will be offering a sad event Saturday of 500 vaccinations at the South Platte site. So there are efforts underway. I don't need to be defensive, but hopefully informative.
And Mr. Chairman, I ask the numbers to this conversation.
Yeah, Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Burns, great points. Last Saturday, Carver Teen Center had a vaccination in South Albany from nine to 12:00. And then Phoebe has already distributed, I think, 26,000 vaccinations for COVID-19 total, and I think 19,000 of those were 65 and older. The other six or so were caregivers. So I think it's a process that's coming down from the government by the age groups that are being, they're being asked to take them, take the shot at this time. My, I got another question for you. The next time we have a Recreation Committee meeting, would you like to be invited to it?
Yeah, if, be glad to. Also, my son, which is heading up a youth basketball, actually he did it last year.
He back here, right?
Yes, he's here. And he's been, everything we do, we're not, as far as complainers, we put our motion in action by going out in the communities. And if I could say, housing authorities, so to speak, you know, apartment complexes, and we bring the kids, we offer the kids out, we donate their uniforms, their cleats, gloves. We had former Commissioner Harry James to help get some gloves out, things of that nature. But, you know, we're not planting, that's my main concern. Right now, you guys are dealing with basically everything. And in saying that, it's more a collective of money, you know, jobs, community, things of that nature. But however, Mr. McColl, he's, we know each other from work, doing work for him. But planting the seeds in our youth has fallen by the wayside. And it's a big concern.
I understand exactly where you come from, Mr. Burns, and I concur with my colleague, Commissioner Johnson. I think it would be a good idea for you to come and attend some of the meetings that the Recreation Committee's been having lately, because our youth is been something that has been very important to this Commission and to that committee. And I think your, your past experience, I think that would probably be the best audience for a lot of, a lot of your concerns, which are very, very, very much appreciated. And I think also the hard work of the Rec Committee. I think those two things would be very cohesive. So I'd invite you to come to that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I also like to thank Mr. Burns for coming. Commissioner Jones, just wanted to kind of bring him up to speed on the comprehensive plan that we have for the Putney Park. Matter of fact, we own everything around, everything, we own 13 acres around the Putney Park, and we are in the process, hopefully we're going to close on that building. Hopefully we're going to close on that building, which is the community center, and we are hoping to put a safe room down there if our grant money comes through. So as soon as we finish up the Radiant Springs area that they're working, that we're working on now, then we're going to start, we're coming down to Putney, and we're going to, we're going to do that. Also, the Putney Neighborhood Watch, Mr. William Williams is the president down there. I don't know if you're familiar with that. They, we, they used to meet virtually on the third Tuesday of each month at 6:30. Matter of fact, we just had a virtual call this, two weeks ago, talking about some things that are going on. So, and you can also call me if you need to, to talk to me about anything that's going on. Down there, we'd be happy to sit down with you, talk to you about what we are doing and plans for Putney Park and the Putney area down there. So we have a lot of good things down there. A gentleman had just rezoned the area right there on the end of the yard, about the post yard. Is that, they're going to be putting a, they're going to be putting a barbecue, barbecue joint there along with a barber shop. So with that, in the Putney Park, once we get everything up and going, I think you, I think you'll see that we're doing all we can and trying to enhance the quality of life for not only the people of Putney, but the people of Albany and Dougherty County. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today, and thank you for coming.
One, one final comment, if you...
Yes, ma'am.
I think Mr. Burns mentioned the South Gate Park that was underwater, and I'm not sure what that park is, where it is, or what park he's talking about.
That's the park that is in South Gate itself, where the new community center was built out there. But entering to that community center, you have to pass right by the baseball field and then the basketball court.
Oh, you're talking about Robert Cross?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm assuming the flooding is temporary. Is that an ongoing problem?
It has been for years and never been...
It's an ongoing problem?
Yes.
That's made perhaps that's something our public work can look at on this according?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Very good. Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Mr. Burns.
Yes, sir. Now, I don't want to kick the can down the road, but I do want to respond to my last concern about Mr. Wright as coming in as a voice, one of the paraneers since I've been left public works as far as Cooper Tower, 4 to 500 Company, United Auto Workers Union still is, he's bringing up some valid points. And I think we, as a community, some of the things that he brought up on the last meeting about the young men and women, whether they're black or white, people of color that might have gotten, you know, into a little growing up stage, getting caught with marijuana to a certain extent, and a couple of things. I think that's vital. Ninety percent of my work is senior citizens, and we also do a lot of work for Dougherty County School System and things of that nature. And so I get to pretty much talk to people at the school, coaches, and things of that nature. It was a comment said by Mr. Edwards, that he would break them down and, you know, bring them one at a time. Like I said, you guys are gatekeepers of the city. Quite sure we can walk and chew gum at the same time, try to get some of these things, multiple things on the table to look at. My concern is the youth. Mr. Jones talking about haircuts and stands of barbecue, that's fine. But he's still overlooking the youth. Nothing is being said about seed time and harvest, because they're the ones going to come up. They're the ones going to come through the pipeline. They're the ones going to be sitting in the seats you guys sitting in. But we don't have any structure. It's okay to get out in the yard to play, but structure for the youth. And they needing it now. They're needing it after doing that virtual schooling to get out and spread out. And that adjourns my conversation. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other delegations that did not previously sign up, but wish to be heard at this time? All right, thank you. And we thank you for your comments. Let's now move on. Zoning, public hearing. Those wishing to speak on these matters should print their name on the sign up sheet in the rear of the chamber. And the first matter is Ola M. Brown, owner, and Frank Hadley IV, applicant, requested rezon. 14.996 acres from Ag Agricultural District to RG Single Family Residential District, county only. The property address is 2620 Gibson Road. Planning Commission recommends approval. Ms. Teeter.
Okay.
And Madam Clerk, I didn't have any, we didn't have anybody signed up, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Teeter.
Okay. Again, the property is located on Gibson Road, and it's to the West Amoltry Road. You'll see that up there in the, in the right hand corner. And the applicant requests rezon 14.9 acres from Ag, Ag Agricultural District, to RG Single Family Residential District in the county only. Agricultural lots require a minimum lot size of 40 acres, so an approved rezoning will allow the property to be subdivided into two tracks. And the zoning history, it has retained its original Ag designation since the county adopted zoning. The adjacent area is primarily zoned Ag, and the closest residential zoning district is located to the west on Gibson Road. That was rezoned from Ag to RMHS in 1988. It consists of 24 one acre plus lots, and you can see it here to, to the west, the RMH District, and predominantly agricultural. There is an RG District there on Gravelfield Road. And approved rezoning will allow for subdivision of the 14.9 acre track into two tracks. The existing house will occupy a two acre parcel, and then the other residence, which is planned to be constructed in the future, would be on the 12.9 acre parcel. And continued residential use should be compatible with adjacent agricultural area and single family residences located west on Gibson Road. And the proposed zoning continuation of residential use should not have an adverse effect on adjacent agricultural operations or nearby residential property. And the current Ag designation allows for agricultural operations, but no livestock since it's less than 20 acres, and a single family home, which could be mobile or site built. So the size of the property has limited use as an Ag track. This will show you the land use in the area, vacant land to the south and agricultural, and again, mobile home subdivision to the, to the west. An aerial view of the property. Future land use map recommends agricultural forestry uses for this area. The current Ag designation allows for low density residential housing, and that would be one unit per 10 acres. The land use element of the comprehensive plan defines low density as an average of four units per acre, and the required lot size of two acres exceeds its low density standard, but not the 10 acre minimum required for the Ag District. So the RG designation is intended to complement the Ag District with larger lot sizes and greater setbacks. And the Planning Commission recommends approval to rezon to RG Single Family Residential District, county only.
Got it. All right. Any comments or questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Teeter. All right, let's move on to purchases. Consider for action the recommendation... Consider for action the recommendation to purchase one twenty twenty freight liner, one fourteen SD with attached twenty twenty-one polar SRX eight hundred dash one tank trailer for solid waste from the lowest responsible, responsible bidder meeting specifications, four-star freight liner out of Montgomery, Alabama, in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Funding is available in solid waste capital outlay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in second. Any discussion? There being no, call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the recommendation to purchase two Zoll Medical X-Series monitored defibrillators for the EMS department from single-source vendor, Zoll Medical Corporation out of Chelmsford, Massachusetts, in the amount of sixty-one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents. Funding is budgeted in SPOSS seven. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? There being no, call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the recommendation to purchase ten Motorola portable radios for the EMS department from single-source vendor, Motorola Solutions out of Albany, Georgia, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Funding is budgeted in SPOSS seven. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in second. Any discussion? There being no, call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Additional business. Consider for action the zoning consideration of Ola M. Brown owner and Frank Hadley the fourth applicant request to rezone fourteen point nine nine six acres from Ag Agricultural District to RG Single Family Residential District, county only. The property address is twenty-six twenty Gibson Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion in second. Any discussion? There being no, call the matter for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. McCoy, do you have anything?
Nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Mr. Lee is out. Commissioner Newsom?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gray?
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now that I've had my final vaccination, I look forward to, on the advice of my doctor when I can return, so that should be soon, I hope.
Very good. We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to commend Scott Steiner and the staff out of Phoebe Putney for the, for the great information that they are providing to us during that dashboard update. And as of, as of the twelfth of this month, they have vaccinated over twenty-seven thousand vaccines have been given, and now we got, we're going to have partners coming on to help out with these vaccines that we're talking about. And the Albany Area Primary Health Group is going to be coming on board, doing some things. They're going to be, they're going to set up some vaccination stations along with the public, so that those will be, those will be coming down the pipe real soon, and then they're going to have a Citizen Vaccine Center in East Albany that's going to be open on Monday, Monday through Friday over in East Albany, that's that Albany Area Primary Health Care. So look for those things to be coming down the pipe soon, so that we can help us get our folks vaccinated, and I'm just waiting on my time.
Understood, understood. Thank you very much, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Edwards?
Oh, defibrillators.
That's all.
He couldn't say it last week.
I think he had a lot of stress. I think it was confusion. Because I was practicing while you were talking, meditating.
Can we get him some flash cards? Commissioner Johnson?
I have nothing further, so thank you.
All right, thank you all. It's good to be back, and I thank Commissioner Edwards for hosting the commission meeting my absence.